Good evening. Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 18, held today on October 25th in the year 2021. Meeting is called to order. Statement of Notice of Publication. Madam Clerk.
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on October 18th, 2021, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
May I have a call?
Mayor Krenzel.
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Here.
Councilman Gindi.
Here.
Councilman Gertensky.
Here.
Councilwoman Mira.
Here.
Councilman Olivera.
Here.
And Council President Seola.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations on our wards or presentations. We will be going into executive session. We have some items to discuss and also some action to be taken thereafter. So I'll request that we have this resolution. Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2021-273, authorizing the entrance into executive session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
We shall return.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindi to go open, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We reconvene to the public. We now have in part of our agenda session, the 2021 Best Practices. Mr. Zanga, would you discourse upon that?
The Best Practices Checklist is the checklist from State of Jersey that each municipality has to complete, due by 11/3 of 21. It consists of 48 questions, all different types of topics, of which 27 are scored and 21 are informational from the State of Jersey. The Borough needs to score about 15 or higher to receive the final 5% of state aid. We have 19.5, so we receive the final state aid payment. The other questions on there all are informational, which the state provides from all 565 municipalities and decides who has certain agreements, who has shared services, who has part-time people and so forth, and then they compile information that they give out to all the towns going forward. But right now, we're going to receive our final 5% payment.
Any questions? Do we have to do anything on that? Or just...
Sue, myself, and Art have to follow it online on the state website. They have to approve tonight.
Well done, everyone. Now we're staying with best practices. Excellent. Moving on to ordinances, second reading, public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2021-17, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 350 entitled "Zoning."
Is there a waiver of the full reading?
Wait for reading.
Wait for the full reading by Mr. Seola.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gertensky. All in favor?
Aye.
Against the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public. Please come forward, give your name and address, and immediately speak upon this matter.
This is the ordinance about trees for trees?
Yes.
Okay. Jack Ally, 198 Main Street. The ordinance is being changed from 450 to 50. Is that the fee change that you're looking at it? Is that correct?
The present ordinance is, however, and I guess we should also read this, inform the public, that the planning board reviewed this ordinance, and while they found that they had a trouble with the spirit, they requested that we have a...
Sliding scale.
A sliding scale to this.
If you have a lot of trees that somebody didn't, they would prorate to that.
Yeah.
Well, just to give you a little history of it, John, you probably remember, you were on the, you were here on the dais at the time. When we changed it, I don't know, four years, five years ago, it was $150. And the Shade Tree Commission had concerns because when somebody replaced a tree and they got, were charged a fee of $150, it cost the Shade Tree Commission $450 to replace the caliber tree that was required by the ordinance. So we increased the value of, you know, the fee to $450 so that at least somebody wouldn't be able to cheaply get out of planting a tree in town. So now if you lower it, she's probably, it's probably more money now to plant one of that caliber. So I think that this is going to make it a monetary incentive for a developer to not plant trees. And when they do pay to get out of it, the Shade Tree Commission won't commission, won't get enough money to cover the cost of planting a tree that was replaced. So I think this is a bad idea. The prorating, I have no problem with, but I would stick with the value that it costs to install a tree should be the amount that money, somebody is paid, or has to pay for the development. Thank you.
Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Close call.
Motion made to close public by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Pleasure on the ordinance. Calling once. Calling twice. Call third time. Hearing, no one has moved the ordinance. The ordinance fails. Well, they listen to you, Mr. Ali. So, Mr. Gindi, did you, this has been your baby. Any thoughts on this?
Well, we had the planning board meeting. I wasn't here at the last council meeting, but I had the opportunity to actually look at this ordinance, and I did not agree with the $50 price. So after being with the planning board and talking about it, we agreed on having a sliding scale, which we have to figure out numbers before we decide to move forward on it. So hopefully by the November 12th meeting, we should look at a, what?
15th.
November 15th meeting, we should have a first reading.
Very good. All right then. Stay tuned. We now have ordinances, first reading by title only, 2021-18. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending, an ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain Borough officers and employees in the Borough of South River. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
Most...
May I move that the council pass ordinance 2021-18 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on November the 15th at 7:00 p.m. 2021 by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers in the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion has been made by Ms. Seola.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
We'll revisit this at our November meeting.
Ordinance...
2021-19. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance to amend the Borough of South River, Chapter 155-19.1, Section 22-62, to add cheerleading class fees. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
May I like to make a move that the council pass ordinance 2021-19 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading to be held by a public meeting at 7:00 p.m. on November the 15th, 2021, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at a criminal justice building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
I'll second that. Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
We'll revisit this in November. Ordinance 2021-20.
An ordinance amending Article 22, I'm sorry, 17, I'm sorry, Municipal Alliance Committee for Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
I move that the council pass ordinance 2021-20 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 p.m. on November 15th, 2021, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
Revisited in November. This concerns the meeting schedule revision. Ordinance 2021-21 concerns stop signs. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Borough Code of the Borough of South River as so to amend Chapter 193 entitled "Vehicles and Traffic." May I have a motion to accept as introduced?
I move that the council pass ordinance 2021-21 on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at the meeting at 7:00 p.m. on November the 15th, 2021, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers at the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas.
Yes.
Councilman Gindi.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira.
Yes.
Councilman Olivera.
Yes.
And Council President Seola.
Yes.
And we'll revisit this in November. Moving on with the agenda, we have our reports, beginning as we traditionally do with our Borough Engineer. Hello, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Pardon me. So the 2020-21 road improvements, which includes the curb and sidewalk program, we have scheduled the preconstruction meeting for October 1st at 10 o'clock. The 2022 local aid is down at the DOT with everyone else's applications for review and just waiting to hear back from the Governor's Office regarding that. The substation maintenance, the, I spoke with High Energy, and they're just standing down on their work while the other work is going on at the substation, so there's not too many people trying to work there at one time. And then once that winds down, then they'll gear up with their work, which makes sense to me. So I, I think that's a good decision. And then the well replacement, I have an update beyond that, which is in my report, and that is the fiberglass enclosure for the well has been delivered to the site. The contractor has completed installation of the concrete pad to support the enclosure, and the contractor is currently installing the blow-off drain piping. Once the piping is installed, the remaining work generally consists of electrical and control work. So it's moving along nicely. And that, oh, and then the local freight impact fund is still open for submission up until November 26th. And that's it. Thank you.
And what does that consist of?
I have it right here, Mr. Mayor. I will read it to you. That it's a local, pardon me, it's a competitive grant program submitted for consideration, and projects must be within the jurisdiction of the applicant's municipality, demonstrate that the project will provide access to a port, warehouse distribution center, or any other freight mode by providing a narrative and a map supporting the request. Projects must have a minimum of 10% large truck volume within the project limits. Traffic study is required. If there's not enough applications to meet the 10% minimum, then applications above 5% threshold will be considered.
Okay. Answer my question. The question I had is, I don't know what I thought it was, you said October 1st, but on Monday, November 1st, that's the preconstruction.
Yeah, if I said October, I did, I wrote down October, so I said it, which was wrong. It's November. Thank you.
Okay, that's, and that's where the roadway improvements...
That is correct.
...of 2021.
Yep.
Know that going through, ready for next year, and start getting on that, or this year it would be...
There is water main work involved, so I think that that will probably commence first, Mr. Mayor, and then we'll see how the weather is going and go from there.
I got the, for Bruce.
I do, I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Bruce, the well, is it, are we using it at all yet?
Oh, no, 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 no.
So it's still in the testing phase?
Well, it's, there's, the construction is still underway. It has been tested, flow-tested, and it passed that. Remaining, the permanent work now is being done, and then there's the permitting process to operate it. So it's, it's not ready to be put into service yet, neither from a mechanical nor a permitting standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Zanga.
I have a few other resolutions coming agenda. First one is 2021 budget transfers. According to state statute, you can begin to transfer on November 1st, so you have the right to resolution on the transfer between certain line names. You also have a resolution to purchase new police vehicles. You also have a co-op. You also have a resolution for awarding agreement with Axon for the body worn cameras. That's where we receive the $87,000 grant. And the final one is a resolution for replacing a couple different bodies on DPW trucks. This was the last piece of the bond that was approved months ago. Hopefully, Jabil, that's a lot longer this way.
Anyone for...
I have a question, Mr. Zanga. For the, the authorized for the transfer of budget, there was a spot that you were transferring money for capital improvement, park improvement. Have we used all of our HCD money for the park improvement, or?
Prior years, we did. This year, that's approved, is $41,000. So after this transfer, we're going to be able to do both parks. Shine Fine and Fitzpatrick. So if you transfer to 25, then we could do both parks. We were short a little bit of our own money over the HCD money, so that's why we're doing a transfer.
Okay. But the HCD money, the last time we got it was only for Varga, correct?
That was the prior year, that was $81,000. Then the year after, we got $41,000, which was used for Fitzpatrick. And then the one that we just applied for this year was for Daley's Pond, and I think Rakowski for like sidewalks and AD, ADA approvals, but we haven't got final approval yet for that one.
Okay.
So we're always a year behind. After we apply for it, it usually takes like a year to receive the approval to spend the money.
So you're saying if we add this money to the budget, we'll be able to do Fitzpatrick?
And Shine Fine.
Okay. Do we have, did we ever get like the model of what we were doing for Fitzpatrick?
Yes, we did.
Last year?
No. This year, we got Fitzpatrick. Last year, we Shine Fine.
No, no, no. I'm saying, this year, did we get the idea of what you were doing for Fitzpatrick?
We spoke about it.
This year or last year?
This year, we spoke about Fitzpatrick. But Shine Fine is also being done now. That was spoke, that was spoke about last year.
Last year, okay. Because I wasn't on last year. That's why I was just trying to figure out what...
Now, last year, we had diagrams for Varga and Shine Fine. This year, we have a diagram for Fitzpatrick also. But now we're going to finish Shine Fine now, because we have the money to put in place in the budget.
Okay. Did somebody email me what we decided to do for Fitzpatrick?
So I just want to clear something up, and that explains why we didn't do anything to Fitzpatrick, since we're going to actually, we'd be rehabilitating the whole entire park, correct?
Yeah, well, the HCD money that just came effective earlier this year was Fitzpatrick. So we had to wait for the HCD group, the federal government, everyone to say, yes, you can spend the money now.
All right. Because I spoke to, I spoke to Adriano, the DPW Director, about it, because I know residents were complaining about, you know, the basketball court, and he said, we're not going to dump money into something that's going to be replaced. I just wasn't sure when we were actually going to move on. I know we were talking about the rendering this, earlier this year.
Yeah, you got approval.
Prior to that, we ended up doing two parks last year, then, correct?
We did Varga last year.
Correct.
This year, you're doing two parks. You're doing Shine Fine and Fitzpatrick.
It's a beautiful thing.
Okay. I'm just curious about the renderings of what we were going to do, because Shine Fine, I wasn't aware of.
Shine Fine got replaced.
I think Shine Fine is on the website, I think.
Yeah, it's already on the website.
We put Shine Fine and Varga on the website. Fitzpatrick, we could put there also.
Varga, I rem, I recall seeing on the website. I hadn't seen, last year was Shine Fine, which I was not on the board, on here, so I wasn't aware of that one.
All right. Those are the ones that are in our office, they have those drawings, those little boards that are by our office, that's Shine Fine, but Fitzpatrick was this year. We can put them all on the website.
Yeah, let's just put it on.
Yeah. There's a little spot, I think, somewhere on the website, that's a park, and all the pictures and everything, you know?
So we're transferring money to be able to finish the project.
And we can do both parks completely with HCD money and our money.
For this year.
For this year. Well, next meeting, you'll have resolution approving Ben Schaefer in rural construction to buy the equipment and also install it.
Okay. Now, with the project that we are doing next to Shine Fine, uh, next to Fitzpatrick, are we, are we confident that what's happening now up there is not going to ruin what will be put in?
Nope. Definitely not.
You're not confident, or you are confident?
I'm confident it's not going to ruin.
Yeah, it's not the...
I'm confident. I'm confident. With all the engineers involved, I'm very confident. You've got way too many professionals involved in that big project right there.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
I don't see if anything goes wrong with, like, Mr. Koch.
Yeah.
I don't think I was involved, so that's fine.
Anything else for Mr. Zanga?
No.
She?
Mayor, I don't have anything for the senior.
Clerk?
Um...
Progressing with our, just how we see it, we'll know the voting results, I hope.
Yeah. They're supposed to be live on the county website, they were saying, as the votes are coming in, they're going to be, the screen will be refreshed, so people can go right out into the Middlesex County Board of Elections website, or county clerk's website, and you can watch, you can watch the votes coming in. In-person early voting is going on right now. It started on Saturday. It'll go through until the 31st throughout the 10 selected towns in Middlesex County and other counties of their towns. Mercantile applications to update you from two meetings ago. The Burning Panda was approved on September 13th, a tobacco shop. Beautiful nails, nail salon, approved on September 15th. Moore's Discount Parts is pending, that's recycled auto parts. Jersey Prime Meats Wholesale Meat and Storage was approved October 12th, and on the 21st of this month, Polski Smacky Deli was approved. That's all I have.
Madam Attorney? Anything?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mayor, the only thing I have is the last resolution, the reason we're asking for a 30-day extension to the RWJ contract, as we received bids, they were the only bidder. We're still reviewing the bids, so we asked them for 30 days to give us time to do that.
Mr. Lund, I'd say, what's the status on the roof replacement for the library? I had a meeting with DeBulina.
Well, the bond now is in place. The contractor is preparing the specs, and we'll go out to bid.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I think no. Okay. And reporting on our various committees and such, we'll start with Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Next planning board meeting, which is supposed to be scheduled for November 16th, will be moved due to the idea that most of the professionals are going to be down at the league municipalities. So at the council meeting, the November 15th meeting, I'll let you know when it's, or where it's going to be moved to. Zoning board meeting is going to be November 23rd. Parks and Rec, Truck or Treat. We have 15 cars registered as of right now. It's going to be held on October 30th, right here on the old Corbin Street parking lot, from 4:00 to 5:30. My advice is to come there as soon as possible, because within 15 minutes, it's gone. The house decorating contest is underway. Seven houses have registered for it. We will be judging on it October 30th. And I am happy to see that Parks and Rec, I was working with Lakeisha, cheerleading, we're looking at bringing in a program which is going to make a lot of, I should say, girls happy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ballas?
I have nothing at this time. The Board of It is meeting tonight, so I couldn't be there. And I have nothing on the other. They haven't met yet either with the Historical Society.
Mr. Seola?
Thank you. The next environmental meeting will be on November the 7th. I met with them on the last meeting, and a lot of discussion going around and around, and trees were one of the discussions, and also planting of some different forestal shrubbery around town. EDC meeting would be next on November 20th. They've been meeting, they've been discussing different avenues on how to bring in new business, and what we could do to bring in the new business. So that's what I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
Just want to start off, I apologize to the mayor and council. I am out of uniform. I came directly from work. So once again, I apologize to everyone. In terms of the library, we will be meeting tomorrow, but I just wanted to remind everyone, we have weekend hours that are from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And just a reminder that the library Halloween party is on October 28th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Gertensky.
Thank you, Mayor. This is on the Office of Aging. They're going to be offering all three brands of the COVID-19 booster shots to South River residents who meet the following criteria. You're age 65 and over, or age 55 and have specific underlying medical conditions identified by the CDC. The list may be found on the CDC website. Borough residents who meet the criteria are encouraged to call the Office on Aging at 732-257-2340 to schedule an appointment. They need not have received their previous vaccine through the Office on Aging, and they need to be registered on the Office of Aging to participate. Boosters will be administered at the Human Services Building located at 55 Reed, and by appointment only. So they'll be on Tuesday, November 2nd, Tuesday, November 9th, and Tuesday, November 16th. Their appointments only, there's no walk-ins. If they do not fill all the allotments and everything, then we will open it up to the regular South River residents. But that is the criteria right now for that. Okay? Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have right now.
There's 50 people already signed up, so...
Yeah.
There's 50 people already signed up, so, uh, don't wait. Mr. Mara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the Board of Health had a painting party, um, this month in October, and they were able to fundraise a thousand dollars, and that's going towards the TNR program that we have in place. Uh, the Food Bank is now delivering warm meals, uh, two nights a week, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, to residents in need in town. Uh, they do well over a hundred warm meals per night, and they were able to accomplish this through Soup Kitchen 411, they received a $2 million grant, and this is part of Feed New Jersey. It works by buying meals in large quantities from local restaurants. Uh, their slogan is actually, save restaurants, feed communities. This grant was spent, uh, and over 200,000, um, restaurants prepared, well, 200,000 restaurant-prepared meals were out and delivered to, um, New Jersey. Uh, that's about 20,000 meals they were putting out a week, um, never frozen. And one of our local restaurants, Riamar, is actually a part of, uh, this, uh, program with Soup Kitchen 411, so you can imagine how warm our residents get their meals twice a week. So I do like to, um, give a shout-out to the Riamar for actually being a part of such a good program that we're able to use here in town. Uh, thank Beth Lucas and all of the volunteers down at the Food Bank. Um, they spend their time twice a week at night going out to these homes and personally delivering these meals for our food insecure families, so, uh, it's a wonderful program. We're able to help our local businesses and our local people, all at the same time, so, um, it's just one other, uh, program and grants that we're getting in New Jersey that us locally are able to benefit for, so. And I'm sure if anybody would like to volunteer at the Food Bank, they're always in need of helping hands. Um, other than that, the Human Relations Commission has a meeting at the beginning of the month, I believe it's November 2nd, and you'll get that information on the Borough website for the time. Uh, that's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my important, uh, no, it is simply that in-person early voting will be open from Saturday, October 23rd, which has already passed, through Sunday, October 31st. Hours will be Monday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The county decided where they were going to have the 10, uh, places, uh, that you could go and vote. The closest to South River is either East Brunswick Community Center, which is at 721 Cranberry Road in East Brunswick, which I think is quite a distance down there, I think it's past the chateau. Uh, but the closer one is the Servile Senior Center at 423 Main Street in Servile, so, uh, if you are inclined to vote early, you can go. Uh, I understand it is quite something nowadays, no more signing names in books, it's all electronic now, so, uh, it could be quite an experience, but they're very helpful. Don't be afraid, you can go early to vote, or you can do it the old-fashioned way, vote on Election Day, which is November the 2nd, and/or if you have your ballot, make sure you get it out, put it into the mail, and if you're worried that it's not gonna get there in time, you can go right down to 48 Washington Street, there is a box there, it's secured, it's under 24-hour surveillance, you can drop it in, turn, smile to the camera, and you know that you have voted, so, that's, uh, something that, uh, needs to be done, because voting is a wonderful right that we have. Moving on to the public comments, uh, you may come forward, you have 10 minutes to speak, please give your name and address.
Jan Stinkus, Portis, 46 Foothills Drive, South River, and, um, I brought some pictures, and I brought some information to, um, in, as a time, so that you can prove is that your own, so we're discovering what I'm talking about, I didn't make copies for everyone, but, and there's documentation. If you need any other information from what I'm talking about, I could gladly supply that. Since I've been asking, I've had a problem for over the past year, um, and so I decided, since no one really wanted to come and see my problem, I brought my pictures with me, so that you actually can see them. Um, I'm here tonight to publicly air my opposition to the unequal process of code enforcement, permit inspection, and property maintenance regarding the two properties on my back porch, specifically the replacement of a two-railroad tie wall with a five-to-six-block wall with a header, the erection of a fence behind an artificially raised wall, also the lack of support for a property maintenance regarding storage of over 600 pounds of rock salt, garbage cans, and other materials partially on my property. As a lifelong resident, living at my present address here in South River for the past 35 years, I'm extremely distressed with the way this has been addressed, or should I say, not addressed. Uh, I received a letter from the Borough Attorney, Andrea Wyatt, assuring me all permits, codes, and inspections have been followed. This is based on more than a year process of trying to get inspection of the building of a retaining wall that's erected on top of a fence. Oh, I'm sorry, that didn't quite make sense there. After receiving the Oprah records, which took over eight months to receive, I questioned missing information and inconsistencies. The new permit received on October 5th, 2020, still says a two-foot wall. Mr. Lundenski approved it and a patio. There was never a mention of a patio or any other information from the homeowner regarding a size. Um, okay, so, uh, Mr. Lundenski informed me in writing that it was a misunderstanding, uh, from the homeowners. The approval of the zoning date at 10/7/20 has no inspection date or result, including in the Oprah request is a picture of the wall. Um, and my question is, why can't a public official verify the height of the wall and what was on the permit? Okay, and where's the evidence of the inspection? The two forms of the inspection are blank. If the wall is 48 inches, it would require a construction permit as per code. Even if it's under that measurement, it has created an unsafe, unsafe situation on my property. What you're telling me is that it is code to artificially raise a wall on your property, fill it, prop it up with a board, and railroad spikes, and then put a fence on top of it. So you can take a look at the pictures, okay? So if you look here, this is what you can see, okay? So how it... In the right direction here, okay? So here, you can see where the wall was, okay? They went higher than the two-railroad tie wall, and because the property slopes, they wanted an even wall, so they raised it up higher, which made, created a drop on my side of the property, which then they filled and put a board with railroad tie spikes, which is now eroding, okay? So you can see where there was concrete, it's all falling down, under the board after all the heavy rains we had this summer, it's all running into my property. Okay, so, again, you can see, so then artificially raising, I had over, okay, when I moved in the house in 1987, went before the zoning, when you had to have full zoning approval for a stockade fence, it wasn't six inches from the property line. So my, no, my stockade fence, which was decaying at this point, okay, was properly installed. So here you can see where the remainder of my fence is, a six-foot measuring stick, and how high then their wall is on my side, their fence is on my side of the property, okay? Again, here's their corner, which they also put up higher, which is over seven, it's seven feet or more, and then they went down, okay? Here's the corner post, okay? So this is code, and here in New Jersey, in South River, this is the way we put up a fence on a corner, we have a drainage pipe, okay? Okay, open cinder block, that's what I see on my side of the property. I'm sure their wall looks very nice on their side. It's not what the permit was for. Okay, so, then, here's the, okay, this is the 600 pounds of rock salt that's been there, that I've been complaining about, that is also partially on my property. Okay, here you can see my stakes that I had put in, okay? Also, the fence is not as per, when you look at, at my, um, information that I provided for you, okay? The, the homeowner drew a drawing and saying that the fence was going on top of the wall. It's not, okay? Their wall is on their property, it's six inches from the property line, but their fence is not, okay? So here you can see where this is my stake from my property line, and it's about an inch and a half. Okay, Mr. Droppa emailed me, uh, to say that a violation was being mailed about the 600 pounds of degraded rock, ex-salt, and garbage cans. Um, he said, when he did, he did come to my property, he also said he never inspected the fence, and he took pictures and measured the fence, where it's seven feet or more, and said he had to do more research. So what happened? Okay?
How long ago did you speak to Mr. Droppa?
Um, I, I would have to go back in my notes, it was in...
I will follow up.
It was right after, um, I had an email from you that you would look into it, um, so it was shortly after that, that, that he came, and then it, nothing else happened after it.
Has the neighbor ever thought about fixing it? Has he ever been approached about fixing it?
No.
No, okay.
No, and I have an email that's from Mr. Lundenski stating that the homeowner was going to drop it, the wall, this was way back in 2020, that they would remove one block from the wall, okay? Never happened. Okay, never happened, they proceeded to put the fence up on top of it. Mr. Koch, you were at the property in the beginning, okay? I have emails going way back with Mr. Evenger, text messages, that I can show you all of my correspondence, okay? I'm really upset that I've had to deal with this, okay? I've lived in, I've lived here all of my life, okay? I try to follow the law, and this is extremely upsetting, okay? And right before that, and, and actually, the property which is in question, which was originally owned, um, by Mr. Scanlon, okay? Who lived there since the beginning when the development was put up, okay? He bought, when he went to sell that property, he actually made a complaint to the Borough because my fence was falling apart. So at that time, it was my fence, my wall, and the code enforcer came and said, and I said to him, you know, my husband's really ill, and we'll get to it, and he immediately said to me, oh, well, you'll get a violation, okay? Right like that, get a violation, all right? So we just took the wall, the fencing down, okay? Now, all of a sudden, with a new homeowner, the wall is not my wall, they came in with bulldozers, took the railroad tie wall out, and my fence. Can't have it both ways, okay? Also, that railroad tie wall, which was put up according to my neighbors around 1962, follows almost the whole road, well, of Foothills Drive. And the homeowner's actually said to me, I should've been the one to replace the wall, everybody else up listed. Well, you can't have it both ways, it can't be yours, because you want to put up something you want, and, you know, to have bulldozers come in, rip it totally apart, I have a survey, I just told my survey wasn't, you know, they had a new survey, well, you know, why isn't my survey right? My survey says the three rail tie wall is mine, okay? Wooden seal of New Jersey on it, okay? Okay, Jovanado, local person, and I actually asked if we could wait, because it was a property dispute, and I was informed by, by your attorney that, that's, that's something for the courts, okay? If, but you, by already allowing them to do it, you already sided with them. It, it didn't go to the courts, it should've been not, nothing should've happened until the property line dispute was settled. Okay, but again, the permit was given, they went ahead and did the work, and I left with the best on my side. Okay, I had all of my retaining walls, okay? A lot of us have retaining walls on this street, all of them were put up by a local contractor, Glenn was the code official at the time, okay? It was very strict, couldn't change any wall, everything had to be the same height, okay? I followed all of them, and nothing at that point said the railroad tie wall was a problem on my property.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Um, since our resident is not happy with the results that she's been received, would it be possible for us as the Borough to use, um, our shared services with another town for a construction official to make sure everything is up to code?
If, if I may, I was waiting until everybody was finished to, uh, update council.
We have been advised that DCA is coming down to look at the issue concerning the construction, issues in the construction and code violation allegations, um, and then we will go accordingly. So we wouldn't actually need another shared service, another construction official, because the state is gonna come down and inspect that, we have been waiting on that, we have yet to receive notification that that has occurred. Um, but that's what, what we are currently waiting for right now, so, so it is actually happening.
So the DCA notified us that they were coming?
No, I contacted DCA and they filed a complaint.
Okay.
And we have been advised that they're coming down to look at the...
And, and they did advise me that you have not sent the permit in, that's what, what I was...
We, we can check on that, um, if that's what they need for them to act.
Let us know if they show up, because you may know about it before we do.
Well, I, I'd love your comment on this, uh, you know, I mean, really, you know, every contractor who's been, as I said, I've had a lot of renovations under my yard, every contractor who's come in and said, are you kidding? Are you, okay? You know, that's an embarrassment, I would think, for the town of South River, okay? It, it just shows that, you know, go ahead and try and do something, you know, without a permit, and you're talking about all of these buildings and things that you want to renovate in South River, if you can't take care of one homeowner's problem and put up, and, and make sure it follows code, I see that as a problem. And how does anybody trust you to go out and make sure that all of your other work is legit?
We will wait for the DCA to give us their report.
Okay, DCA will only get involved if it's 48 inches, okay? So as we see, you know, and why, you know, the picture was taken, the picture was taken by someone, because it was given to me on the Oprah report, why can't somebody tell me the measurement of the wall?
How long has this wall been up?
Since last year, um, May of 2021.
2020?
Right, and all work was done on holiday weekends? I have all, I have all text messages from Mr. Evenger, so I can give you all that as well. Okay, but you can see it's five blocks, if it's the smallest-sized block, it's eight inches, that's 40 inches right there, so you have a footer and a header, okay? So it's close to 48 inches one way or the other. And even if it's not, to allow a corner with a pipe like that showing in my yard, okay? And the other, the problem is also, is that this yard, okay? I can't finish my fence here either, because if I, you know, until this is developed it, because I don't want to have a problem in saying, I'm applying for a permit, where does the fence go? So I'm not able to use my backyard, where I have two puppies, okay? And can't fence it in because of this.
Right.
And it's been a year, we're talking a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jack Ali, 198 Main Street, uh, this time I'm, uh, speaking as representative of South River Little League. Um, since the pandemic, we've had a drop-off in our enrollment in Little League. We always had six teams for many, many years in South River, and it's, it was always tough to keep it up, but this past year, we only had three teams, and South River League, Little League is a institution in town that a lot of you guys probably were involved with, and it's a great family experience. Uh, so what we're asking for help from the town was, if it was possible for us to get a flyer in the electric bill in January, to try to help us with enrollment. I know that we're a private organization, but we do use land that's owned by South River on a lease, um, and we would be willing to pay for the costs of the flyers, and I'm just wondering if that's possible, that the Borough could help us out with something like that.
I, I can look into see if we can do something. Um, I'm not sure legally if we are allowed, but, um, what I can do is I'll look into it, and we'll be in contact.
So we would love to get something out in January if possible. We're trying every method we can to get kids to sign up for Little League, and we're hoping that with the pandemic winding down, that maybe we will get some, some people signing up, and that's all I have for tonight.
Check also to see, can we not put it on our website too, our brandy-new website?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I would also add softball to it, too.
What's that?
I would also add the softball to it, too, because I know a lot of people have been complaining.
Yeah. For rec, for rec softball?
Yep.
And rec is our feeder program for Little League, and, you know, I know we had four T-ball teams last year, so there is some hope that, you know, we're gonna build up for it.
Yeah, I'll back that one.
And I have to go, because my son is on the ball field right now.
Off you go. Anyone else on first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close?
No, hold on, do you want to speak?
I, I would like to speak.
I'm actually here, my name is Pamela Sloan, uh, I actually called your office last week, I was very upset. Uh, this is my landlord. Uh, it's ironic that you said you're trying to encourage new businesses to come into town. I have, for the past 20 years, been, uh, trying to make a living in my dog grooming business on Hillside Avenue. Chronic parking problems, when I moved in 20 years ago, not for me, for the four other businesses that were, three other businesses at the time that were there, the only available parking is on Hillside Avenue, and there were several unmarked, there were not lines, demarcating where the, where the individual spaces were, um, at 15 minutes limit for the time, so that there would be a turnover, so that people could use the businesses. Now, I have to say, I acknowledge that South River, like every other town, has more cars than places to put them. So, in about 2008, I came before the board, having chronic problems, and had it, it started, actually, it was overnight, people could park whenever they wanted, but during the day, from 8:00 to 5:00, it was 15-minute limit, when the businesses were open, and I had the board amended to start at 7:00 AM, because I started earlier, so it was from 7:00 to 5:00. And I still had chronic problems, people, you know, would look and go, you're not talking to me, like 15 minutes, like they do everywhere. I'm loathe to call the police, because I do know that you have many bigger problems, but this is my livelihood, okay? I have been screamed at, cursed at, my personal vehicle has been keyed... My personal vehicle has been keyed on every surface by the residents of that neighborhood, who by the way, all have driveways, but they don't want the commercial presence in that neighborhood, which by the way, predates me and predates probably every homeowner that's currently living there. Cause that building on Hillside in Maine is from the 30s or the 40s.
It was Melzer's back in the day, yeah.
I remember going there as a child, it was like a five and 10 store or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So in 2008, they did change it to, um, 7:00 AM. And it was still kind of undemarkated parking. I made the mistake of asking Sergeant York for better signs that said 15 minutes and lines in the road because there were people that would come and kind of park in between and take up. What he gave me was two unlimited spaces. And then directly in front of my shop, it's still 15 minutes. Okay? Now, you think that'd be great for me, except that there, especially now, there's a new homeowner that has had a van parked in the first space for four months without moving it. There's weeds and grass growing up underneath it. First of all, it's an eyesore because people coming in from Route 18, they turn there and that's kind of like the entrance to your business district. And they have a second vehicle that they park in the second space. So that leaves the 15 minute space directly in front of my store, which is the only option for contractors, repairmen, delivery men, and nobody can use my business. So the thing that has brought me here tonight was several weeks ago, this new family, uh, the woman was sitting in front of my store and I saw her get out of her car and her daughter looked like she had a nosebleed. So of course I'm not going to call the police. Their van, four months, another car, and she's in the 15 minute spot. And I see her laughing and whatever in the car. So I just go outside to look at the back of the car, to see that it's actually her. So she calls me on the phone and starts screaming obscenities at me. The F word, the B word, the shit word, I'm sorry, the S word. And on and on. And I'm, you know, I, I'm thinking to myself, and I tried to calm her. I said, "Look, I saw that your daughter looked like she had a medical problem. I was, I didn't call the police to have your car ticketed. I didn't..." At this point in time, I'm afraid to come to work because it's dark sometimes when I come in in the morning. These people have made it very clear that they can do whatever the hell they want. And unfortunately, the new parking regulations allow them to do that. So you're looking for new business? Here's a 20-year business in South River. That's been struggling. The last two years have been very difficult, obviously, with COVID. And I get nothing. And now Sergeant York had said to me, "They're thinking about leaving the first space unlimited so that people can park there for four months at a time." And the, the owner of the vehicle said to me, "It's licensed and it's registered, so I can do whatever I want." Okay? Those are the only spots for potentially four or five businesses on that corner. And there's been such a turnover in the 20 years that I have been there. There's been a thrift shop, a, a, a spa, a, a Middle Eastern food store, a photographer, a chocolate store. Now there's a vitamin store there. I don't know how they're supposed to have anybody be able to use their business. And it really isn't right that I feel threatened coming to make a living.
No, you shouldn't be that either. Chief, isn't there an ordinance in South River that says you cannot park? Just leave a vehicle out there on the street for months on end?
I have to look, but that's a, that's a public roadway, so if vehicle is registered...
And that's what the owner told me. If it's registered and licensed. Um, these are just pictures. And by the way, this person has a, there are many homes, I'm sure, in South River that don't have driveways. Everybody that's giving me a hard time that lives on this street has their own driveway. This man has four or five vehicles, but he has a driveway.
Yeah, I, I find that also, and it's not just around you, but in so many different places, people have driveways and they don't use them.
There's just a couple, this is particularly the day that, um, this is his van in the front. This is, this is on Hillside, looking towards the light at Main Street, okay? And my business is like here. So this is the van in front, and you see, there's no parking. And when I came in 2008, I said to you, you know, I have a lot of elderly clients. I have a lot of clients that have more than one animal. I have a dog grooming business. These days, I run out to the car and get the dog and run back. So it's not like anybody is there for more than five or 10 minutes at a time. Okay?
That would be, can we change it back to make all three? You want it all three?
Ideally, it would be wonderful if it was from seven to five.
It's only that one stretch right there. I know exactly where you are.
There's three parking spots.
There's three spaces there.
Then there's the driveway right after that.
Exactly.
And there's a huge striped driveway, which no one, by the way, asked if it was okay to do that. They just came and striped it one day. Nobody said to the business, the, the building owner or the, the shop owner, "We're going to stripe this driveway like another 40 or 50 feet so that nobody can park there." And then there's two spaces that are always taken. This morning, when I came in, there was no place for me to park.
Who's "they"?
I'm sorry?
You just used the word "they." You said they striped it. Who's "they"?
The two, as you're looking out of my shop, okay, this, there's these three spaces to the light at...
Striped it.
The city, the town striped it. The two homeowners said that people, you know, tend to linger there, that, so they had all yellow striping on their driveway. So there's another 40 or 50 feet where no one can park. And as I say, this morning I came in about quarter after six, there's no place to park.
She's saying that they made it a no parking zone, so it's from, from the corner, correct?
Yeah, the corner to the...
From the corner?
No, it's not the corner of, not the corner of Main. It's from the...
Two driveways that are right after the parking spot.
Beyond the third parking space. There's two driveways adjacent to one another that they just striped in yellow, that no one can park there.
Right, because no one can park there.
So it's the driveway, then it's striped, and then it's another driveway. So they just striped...
They're back to back.
Even the solid spot.
They're back to back, yeah.
You're not, you're not allowed to park in front of a driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, I understand that. I'm not parking there, and neither are my clients parking there. But if there's no place to park, how's anybody supposed to run a business?
Okay.
Chief, can Sergeant York take a look and see if we can revert back to the... You could revert back to the 15 minute parking spot. The only, the only thing is just like handicap parking. Handicap parking isn't made, the 15 minute parking wouldn't be made for our business.
It was not made for my business. It predates me.
If a neighbor parks there for 15 minutes at a time, there's no stopping them. So I, I think, I think...
There's no stopping them?
There's no stopping them from parking at 15 minutes at a time, it's 15 minute parking.
No, no, I never call after 15 minutes. I usually wait a half hour or 45 minutes. And then it's an...
I think the issue that you had, I, I think you've been trying to work this out with Sergeant York. I think Sergeant York has been trying to do whatever he can to help you out.
We've had many conversations. And he said to me last week, he wanted to make the first base remain unlimited. So that van will be there a year from now when you're having a board meeting. The second, 30 minutes?
I think the first base, I think when I ride by there, there's always a crossing guard parked there because she...
Not anymore because the van has been there since June. Without ever being moved.
You have to decide what you want to do because not only do we get complaints from the businesses, we also get complaints from the residents.
Absolutely.
So it's like a, it's a kind of like this little thing here that we're stuck in unless you, on the, I don't even know if it's, if it's lawful, if you could take two public parking spaces and make them specifically for the businesses, which I don't think you can do because it's a public street. So it's, it's, it's an issue that will always be happening because you, you either get the complaints from the neighbors or you get complaints from the business.
Yes, but...
Except that, except that no one notified either the building owner or myself that they were going to change this. When I moved in 20 years ago, it was all limited. It was not catering to my business. And the fact that there's been 10 other businesses on that corner, now, there's been other issues, but each one of them, when they said that they were leaving, gave 30 days notice. They mentioned being harassed by the neighbors over parking, getting tickets over parking, not having any parking.
Well, the same problem exists across the street. There can never be any businesses in there because there's no place to park. I mean, the...
Actually, when I moved in, the flooring store was there and people came over and they parked on this side, on, you know, the other side of Main Street. And that was, you know, they didn't stay there for four months at a time.
Yeah, well, I mean, the idea that, um, okay, borough attorney, um, look into whether or not a, a registered vehicle, properly registered, can just sit there and park for umpteen months.
I mean, you did see the weeds growing up underneath. When the street sweeper comes, he has to go around it.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question. Have we ever had discussion on the Main Street area pushing forward the bus stop to be able to have additional parking on that side?
Yeah, but then you get close to that bridge.
You'd have to speak to the port authority on that.
Yeah, cause that's a, that's a county road too, and that's a port authority. We can't, we can't...
Right, I understand. I understand it's very complicated, but I don't need to come to work to try to make a living to have people curse at me and key my car.
Man, listen, when it comes down to people getting loud with you, you should immediately call the police. Don't even, don't even get involved. I, listen, I have the same issue...
I was in my shop. She called me on the phone. I didn't go out and confront her.
That's, that's the reason for having the, the police.
And the other day, I did successfully have a woman who had parked from Saturday till like 1:30 on Monday successfully get a ticket, okay? And when she finally came, she was a young woman, I figured she can't be that threatening. Had a dog under my arm like this. I just leaned out the door and I said, "15 minutes." She goes, "Why is it 15 minutes here?" I said, "For the businesses?" You know, I have a storefront and a sign in the window that says grooming and my number. She goes, "What businesses?"
Geez.
Yeah, but it's actually...
Yeah.
She parked there.
Yeah.
And it's not a towaway zone. So the police can put a ticket on it and can it stay there till the owner gets good and ready to move it.
Okay.
And you want to have new business in South River.
Okay. Should look into that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on first call?
I just want to present myself. I'm Ophelia Lomboro. My husband Giovanni and I, we owned the, the property for 42 years. And I would like and see if they can, and the last seven years, we lost many tenants because of this problem. And even I have the letter for the, two of the tenants that they wrote it to me saying all the things that went through, that they cannot take it anymore. One was the chocolate place that probably you all know. That was a very nice place. They had a really nice, but they have to leave. They went to Route 18. Okay? And we had the photographer also, a girl that always was living in South River and they loved that corner because it's really a nice corner. And, but also, one neighbor went to her and says, I, she says, "I had to face neighbors coming into the studio space yelling and telling me, 'I don't know why you move here. This place is so unsuccessful.'" Okay? And that's what we are going through for the last seven years and it's really, really sad. And I think if you can all help us, help the business to change the two open spaces for at least half hour from one, from seven to five, or whatever you decide, that will help a lot. Because the neighbor across the street that is who parked there since they purchased the property in May, they start parking there. They have driveway, they have backyard, they have, eh, like you see on the picture, they have even garage. That means it's like to being a good neighbor to help the business around. But, okay, that means, thank you very much, and I hope you all can do something for...
We will certainly try.
Hey, Chief, the 15 minute parking, could there be a towaway zone, parking, sorry, sign added to that?
I'll take a look.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that ticket sits under Carl Bay.
If they see the tow, I'm sure that'd kind of feel a little scared.
Only get a ticket and then they'll get towed.
On first call, second call, third call, motion...
Second.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against, the ayes have it. Moving on to, uh, there are several mayoral appointments that are being made. Some do need the advice and consent of the council. So I will turn this over to Madam Clerk.
Where's Resolution 2021-01 authorizes the Borough Council utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-conversational nature at one time. Now therefore, being is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as if the same were individually acted upon. Okay. Resolution 273A, appointments to planning board. 273B, appointments to zoning board. 273C, appointment to library board of trustees. 274, except October 4th, regular and executive session council minutes. 275, approved best practices inventory for 2021. 276, authorized installation of Brian Sicknick Memorial Garden. 277, authorized fire department, low SAP point system. Amendment 278, authorize South River Board of Education, November 2021, requisition of payment. 279, appoint William Alfry to South River Fire Department as a cadet. 280, appoint Lucas Herzig as South River Fire Department cadet. 281, authorize a property tax refund for disabled veteran. 282, authorize the 2021 transfer of budget appropriation. 283, authorize new police vehicle purchase. 284, award Department of Public Works vehicle body replacement bid. 285, authorize purchase of body worn camera system. 286, authorize October 25th utility refunds. 287, authorize the bills and claims list. 288, authorize 30 day extension of the Robert Wood Johnson contract. And we also have action from...
289.
Executive Session, Resolution 289, amended resolution authorizing indemnification of chief of police. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Your call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Uh, yes, with abstention of 277, 279, 280. Then from 288, the bill list, I'm sorry, 287 from the bill list would be 21 dash 02356 02195 00822.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Gorchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilwoman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Ciola?
Yes, with the abstentions from 277, 279, 280. 287, 21 dash 02356 01767 00822 01953 and 02108.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one question. The best practices, does that have to be signed off by the governing body?
No, just the resolution that you read it and approved it. Re-sign off on it.
Very good. All right then. Uh, moving on with the agenda, there are no resolutions to be read separately. Now it's time for governing body comments for the good and welfare of the borough. Councilwoman Mira?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much today. I just want to thank once again Assemblyman Sterling Stanley for assisting me on getting the mobile motor vehicle unit into town on October 19th. They were booked rather quickly and I think everybody, um, in South River benefited from being able to get an appointment so close to home. I'd like to thank the Portuguese Club as well for allowing us to use their location. The parking lot is large enough to have people wait out there because the mobile unit is outdoors and they do the registration outdoors, so it was very helpful. Thank you. We're hoping to get another one. I don't know if it will be this year, but, um, hopefully motor vehicles will be able to do this for our residents one more time. Uh, I'd just like to say I'm glad that the 2021-17 ordinance did not go ahead today. I would ask that please do our homework before rushing a ordinance into first reading. before rushing an ordinance into first reading. We waste money and time every time we do this, and it seems to be happening more and more. So happy Halloween to all the kids out there. I know my kids are going to be busy this weekend. They get to wear their costumes twice, which is a benefit for us since we waste all this money on costumes and sugar them up with candy. But it's nice to see them being out and about while the weather holds up. So happy Halloween, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gershensky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire department, DPW, and Robert Wood Johnson. Quite a few things. Hydrant flushing is coming up tonight in Area 2, so be aware of it, folks that live in that particular area. You could check the borough website to make sure that you're, if you're in that area or not. The leaf bags are still available at the Borough Yard on the weekends. Usually they'll be passing them out. Let's see. We went through first reading tonight on the approval for a few more stop signs in town. Hopefully that'll slow some of the traffic on some of the straighter streets, which quite a few people complained about too because some of the, it's 25 miles an hour. They're not doing 25. But hopefully the stop signs will break up the traffic a little bit more and slow them down and be a little bit more aware. Just like it is on Main Street, you, it may be 25 miles an hour, but you have to be aware that people just step out of cars and swing that door right into traffic. And unless you want a front bumper on your door, please be aware of the traffic that's coming up the street. Halloween is coming up. Please watch out for our children. Go slow. The car show is coming up. I think Peter's going to have more to say about that.
It is awful. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And that's about it. I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Oliver.
So Mayor Krenzel usually asks, you know, for individuals to get involved. Library Board of Trustees is still, has an opening, so if you're interested, please, Evelina would be extremely grateful. Please speak to the mayor. As Councilman Gindy mentioned, we have a busy Saturday coming up. Trunk or Treat is from 4:00 to 5:30 at St. Mary's Coptic parking lot. And then right after, we will be doing our Halloween decorating contest. It's pretty awesome. There's a house off of Cam Avenue that does like a walk-through in their backyard. Their jacuzzi is a witch's brew. If you have an opportunity, please make sure that you guys visit. There's some, a house on Fairview, Jeffrey, just to name a few. Residents are very dedicated to the Halloween decorating contest, and there's some really cool houses out there. Again, please don't forget, the library will be having their Halloween party on the 28th at 6:00 PM. And then, once again, I want to reiterate, the weekend hours are 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. Well, the car show is coming Wednesday, October 27th. It's going to start at 5:00, will end at 9:00. A lot of vendors. Hopefully the weather holds up. And obviously, we know that Halloween is this weekend. Please, please be careful. Kids are going to be walking in and out of these cars. Drive slowly. Think of the kids in, what do you call it, costumes. You may not be able to see them, so drive slowly. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Ballas?
Okay, I get to do the sports. I'd like to congratulate the South River High School girls soccer team, who completed their undefeated divisional play with a 3-1 win over Cavalry Christian. This is their third straight division title. Go girls. Also, with the Halloween decorations, I have the privilege of being across from one of the coolest houses, Fairview. But if you get a chance, drive around town. It's not only the ones that are involved with the, with the contest, but I noticed a lot more people are really decorating. And be careful with the kids on Sunday. Careful and safe. And daylight savings time is next weekend, November 7th. We will fall back, so we lose daylight. So remember to check the batteries in your smoke alarms and your carbon monoxide detectors and replace what you need to have done, and stay safe. That's an important thing. And remember to vote Tuesday, November 2nd. It's, it's a privilege, you know, to be able to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just to reiterate, please be careful. Children are all going to be out doing the trick-or-treating, so please go slow on the local streets and watch out for the children. Next, house numbers. I've noticed in town, there are a lot of homes that do not have house numbers on them. It is very, very important that you have your house properly numbered. In event of an emergency, police, fire, or medical, they don't have time to be running looking for house numbers. They need to go right to your home in a medical emergency. Fire, a police emergency, please make sure you put numbers on your homes. They should be at least two inches in height. Put them in a very area where everybody can see them.
Or you get the reflectors.
Right there. Sorry. Also, commercial vehicles. The past couple weeks, we've, I've been getting a lot of phone calls on commercial vehicles being parked on streets, in people's driveways. Please, there's an ordinance in place that there are no commercial vehicles allowed to be parked in a person's driveway, if it's over 8,000 pounds, I believe it is. There's an ordinance on the books. So if you have any questions, please refer to the ordinance on our website. But again, no commercial vehicles. People have been calling. They've been calling police headquarters. They're patrolling, and our code enforcement is also handing out summonses and violations for these, for this problem. Next, on our first ordinance for our trees, yes, it's done as a first reading for the reason being so the professionals can get it, review it, and come back with suggestions to the mayor and council. That's why a first reading is done. So therefore, the reading on this, there are many changes that they, the planning board wants to see, so therefore it'll be revisited in the future. Also, people are targeting, it looks like, our crossing guards. They're not paying attention when a crossing guard is in the middle of the street with a stop sign. I see them going around the crossing guard with a stop sign. One almost got hit, hit a child one day. So please obey our crossing guards. They're there for a reason. They're there to protect the children. So please stay alert, watch out when they come out on the road, and watch when they tell you to stop. Is that Mayor? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations to the high school girls soccer team. Excellent job this year. It was nice to attend homecoming, the parade, watching the children there. It's truly amazing. As I said, it's quite a mosaic of South River that we have here, looking at all the various royalty that is doing. Thank you, Mr. Gindy, for use of the cars there. It's, it was nice. It was nice to see the town come together, the kids running around throwing candy at them. I just wished they wouldn't throw them at me. You know, it was a fun time. And Halloween is coming up. Remind her that there's a curfew, you know, after 9:00, unless you're with an adult. But by then, hopefully, everybody will be in. It'll be cooler differently out there. So hopefully the weather will be good. It looks as though the weather will be good for our car show. The big storm that is approaching us looks as though it will be petering out, so we will have our car show. The next big storm is coming on Friday into Saturday, so Halloween will be spared. But again, watch out. There will be flooding, and it's not only in South River, but in other towns. Moving on to the voting, yes, November 2nd. We have different ways of voting. And now you can get your mail-in ballot. You can mail it in. You could drop it off at 48 Washington. You can vote early, in person. You can vote on November 2nd. All these different ways of doing it. Mario Como once said that our election day should be our high holy days because it is so important. And how many people don't go out to vote? It may not be the most exciting thing. It's the governor at the top, but it's our governor. It's the governor of this state. And all of the, we used to call them freeholders. Now they're called commissioners. All these people like us, there's votes here that affect South River. You know, we spend your money, so pay attention. See what's going on. See what the various politicians are saying, and then vote for them. And then if you've got a problem, do like the people did here. You can come, you can come to these meetings. They're open now. So by all means, come. And I will last, I'll probably talk about this more later on, but it's, I'm a bit concerned by the fact that I'm hearing from different parts of the town about the fact that our little town of South River, which has always been, you know, a little town, small towns with small towns problems, but also the blessings of small towns. One of the blessings of the small towns is being, having good neighbors. And we seem to be lacking that now. I'm getting reports from around the town about how some people living in their houses, they don't care what anybody else thinks. They don't care about what's going on. They're causing havoc in their neighborhoods, playing music late. They're having fireworks going off. Well, you know, it's one thing that, okay, you have music, you're having a picnic. Not at 12:00 at night, not at 1:00 in the morning. Sending fireworks off at 2:00, that was a beaut that woke me up. You know, and also, just a way treating your neighbor. You know, it's like, hey, something, you may need that neighbor, for no other reason, for your own self. But it seems like people don't care. And that's something that government cannot do. It's something that, you know, people have to do. And I don't know quite how to solve that problem, and I'm open up for suggestions. But anyway, let's end on a happy note. We are having daylight savings come. We don't really lose any time. It's just that it shifts to the mornings so that when you get up, at least it'll be light. So on that happy note, is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none.
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned until November. Thank you.